Okay, good evening to you all and welcome to this scheduled meeting of our Town Council, December 21. As you might know, this will be our last regular scheduled meeting for this year. So since some of you, I'm assuming, may not be around until the end of the meeting, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish you all a happy and a merry Christmas and a safe holiday. So with that, we will begin our meeting and I will ask the Town Clerk if she will to call the roll.
Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Present.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Behringer?
Here.
Okay, thank you so much and Council, thank you for being present this evening. As we always do at our meetings, we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and this evening I am especially honored to have a young man whose parents I know well and I know him over the years, Scott, excuse me, his dad is Scott Clevenger, he is Andrew Clevenger. Andrew, if you will, come to the mic and for those of you who can stand and will, would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Andrew. Did I mention he's from Scout Troop 210? I meant to do that and I appreciate you coming out this evening. Okay, the next order of business is our invocation and this evening we're privileged to have one of our police chaplains, Mr. Lee Smith, to come and lead us this evening. So, Mr. Smith, would you lead us at this time, sir?
Would you pray with me? Almighty God, we indeed thank you for the gift of government. We indeed thank you for this opportunity we have to come together as a community and just as our founding fathers did many, many years ago, we seek your wisdom, we seek your favor this evening. We ask that you dwell within this as we do the business of this community. We also ask, Father, that you be with incoming Chief Smith. We ask that you would grant her the leadership, grant her the wisdom, as she continues to lead the Garner Police Department. We thank you for all the blessings that you have given to the Garner community. Time and again, we can see those blessings at work, especially during these holiday seasons. Would we thank you for all that you have given to each one of us and as a community as a whole? For it's in the almighty name of God we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thanks so much, Chaplain Smith. It always means a lot to have one of you guys that come over and lead us in the invocation. Okay, we will now follow our agenda and the next item is something we call petitions and comments. It's an opportunity at the beginning of each meeting to receive comments from the public on items not included in the agenda. Ideally, citizens should sign up in advance with the Town Clerk prior to the start of the meeting if you're interested in doing that. Do we have anyone sign up, Ms. Gibson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Notwithstanding that, the Council is willing to hear your concerns but may not take any action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation be referred to the appropriate town official or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. So I know we have lots of folks here tonight, but is there anyone who came for the express purpose of desiring to make a comment or petition to Council? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we will move along to the next item, which is the adoption of the agenda. Councilmembers, are you ready to adopt the agenda as presented this evening before you?
Some moved.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, motion made and properly seconded, so all in favor of the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And any opposition, no, and there is none. So thank you very much, the agenda has been approved. Now, we come to the item that many of you are here for this evening and I'm going to recognize at this time our Town Manager, who will be giving us some information about the person, who is the person of the hour, I guess I could say. So, Mr. Town Manager, would you introduce this segment?
Gladly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. It is my honor and privilege tonight to introduce the community to our next police chief and we'll do some of the formal things here in a few minutes, but before we do that, I want to take some time to tell you about Lori Smith and kind of take you through her career here as a Garner police officer. She's been with the department for 24 years, over 24 years, and as I stated before in her bio, that she just brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to the Police Department as the chief. She has been responsible for an array of activities and assignments throughout her career here, ranging from administrative to patrol and investigative, so she's kind of touched every facet of the Police Department here in Garner. She joined the department in 1997 as a member of the Patrol Division and was promoted to Sergeant in 2004. She became the first sworn female member of the department's command staff when she was promoted to Lieutenant in 2015. As Lieutenant, she commanded the Criminal Investigations Division. She was the first female in the history of the department to be promoted to the rank of Captain and commanded the Administrator Bureau through 2020. Some of the things that she was involved in her time here in all those different positions, she served as the primary internal affairs investigator, she was administrator over the department and she got a lot of experience handling the budget, around $8 million annual budget. She had oversight of patrol divisions, she was a support services and criminal investigation officer, and she also served as the primary public information officer. And in addition, she was a field training officer, which means she got to touch and train a lot of the young officers and kind of coached them and mentored them as they came up through the ranks. And she served on the crisis intervention team, served as a negotiator and a team leader on that team. So just to talk about some of her education and qualifications, she is a graduate of NC State. She graduated in 1996 with a bachelor's degree in sociology with a concentration in criminal justice, so I think she knew from a very long time that she wanted to be in law enforcement. She received her master's degree in Justice Administration from Methodist University in 2015 and is a 2018 graduate of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, which is a very prestigious professional training opportunity that a lot of police officers take, very, very distinguished. She also gives back to the community as well and she serves on a number of committees and has served this community very well. She's a board member of the North Carolina Victims Assistance Network where she's been on that from 2016 to 2021 and has most recently been appointed the Board Vice President. She's a member of the Garner Education Foundation where she's helped give out scholarship to deserving youth in Garner and volunteered with SCORE, which is Schools and Communities Organized to Read, which is a reading program for second graders. So she's been very busy and active in the community as well as serving on the PAL activities, Police Activities and Athletics League. And just from talking to her and throughout the process of interviewing her and going through the process, I learned, which I already knew, but she made it very clear how much she loves Garner, how much she loves this community. She grew up here, came through the ranks, and she had a lot of firsts that I mentioned as a female officer and tonight we're going to make her the first police chief of Garner too, so you can add that to your list of firsts. We are honored to have her in our, you know, in the midst here as our next chief and I'm sure she's going to do a great job and I'm going to turn it over to the mayor and we'll have a swearing in ceremony and make it official.
Chief Smith, if you will join me down front, please. Okay, yes, let me just say, it's a real privilege and honor for me to have the opportunity to swear in our new chief tonight. That's one of the privileges that the mayor has from time to time. She could have used someone else, but she chose me, so at any rate, thank you so much. If you will place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Lori Ann Smith.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities which are.
And authorities which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Aye, and state your name, please.
Aye, Lori Ann Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
To enforce the criminal laws of this state.
That I will not be influenced in any manner.
That I will not be influenced in any manner.
On account.
On account.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Execute the duties of my office.
Execute the duties of my office.
As chief of police.
As chief of police.
According to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment.
According to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment.
Congratulations and thank you very much.
chief, Lori Smith, and we will give you an opportunity to speak to the crowd and introduce a first.
We're going to do the badge pinning next.
We're going to do the badge pinning and pinning.
Pinning up, yeah, next, yes.
Okay, fine.
Make sure she has all that on when she speaks as chief.
So I'm going to call Lieutenant, retired Lieutenant Lynn Hatcher up front to assist with this, but I mentioned Lynn a little bit when I speak, but for those of you that don't know him, Lynn was instrumental in my career from the beginning and all the way up to where I am now. I have asked him if he will pin my eagles tonight, so.
I've never pinned that insignia before.
That's another first.
Congratulations.
I guess rest of you figured out this is my husband, y'all nervous because my husband's here. Bye-bye.
Congratulations.
I did prepare a few remarks and if you know me, you know I have to write stuff down, if not I'll get sidetracked and lose my thoughts, so. I am where I am today because I've had a strong support system these past 24 years. I want to first recognize my family, my husband Eric specifically. He is my rock and has always been my strongest supporter, especially these past three, these past 23 years that we've been together. He has pushed me when I've wanted to give up and encouraged and loved me through this entire journey. To my son Parker and my daughter Paige, who is sick and is watching at home, thank you for putting up with an absent mom all these years. I know there were times when I needed to be at home, when I should have been at home, and instead put work before my family. For that, I'm very sorry and ask for your forgiveness. Just know that I tried to make up for it, for my absence as much as possible. As you both are older and are adults now, I hope you see that my sacrifices were not in vain because there were many times that my work family needed me to. My mom, who's in the back, who helped with childcare and helped support me and Eric with the kids when they were small, so that Eric and I could manage our shift work and maintain our careers and a family at the same time. My brother Neil, who's in the back, who's still trying to figure out how his little sister became a police officer, but I know he's really proud. I look around the room tonight at the men and women and I'm humbled and overwhelmed to see all the people who have come out to support me. Your support and friendships over the years have helped shape me into the person that I am today. Told you I'd lose my place. The relationships I've built during my life and during my career with the Police Department have helped prepare me for I stand before you today. I started this journey over 24 years ago as a 23-year-old rookie cop. I had no clue back then at this amazing journey in which I was about to embark. I was fortunate to have some pretty amazing field training officers, two of which are here tonight. Grant Davis, Christine Grayson, and Chris Darden, and I had the best beat partner anyone could ever ask for. I know I drove Marcus Perry crazy the first few years because he spent most of his time trying to keep me out of those tight situations and if you know me, you know I have a magnet for finding things and for those things finding me. Marcus was patient with me, he was a tremendous mentor, and he taught me a lot about being a police officer. And then there's Lynn Hatcher. I can't say enough good things about Lynn. Lynn was my supervisor, he was my mentor and friend during most of my career. Lynn has served as a role model and teacher who not only taught me about police work, but he taught me a lot about life. He was and still is there when I need to bend his ear and has never been afraid to tell me what I needed to hear. Everyone should be fortunate enough to have mentors like Marcus and Lynn. To my command staff. Captain McKeever, Lieutenant Adams, Anderson, Caldwell, and Castillon, I am proud and honored to work with each of you every day. And to my executive assistant, Tracy Hamilton, you are an amazing person and I appreciate what you do for all of us and for the Police Department. We could not do it without you. I look forward to the great things that we will accomplish, not only for the Police Department, but for our community. I am thankful for the strong working relationship that we all have because our relationships are built on trust and mutual respect for one another and that is what will make us be successful. So the most frequent question I've been asked this past week is, what does it feel like to be chief and on top of that, what does it feel like to be the first female chief? Well, the short answer is, it feels great. Still trying to let it sink in and process it. And like we talked about earlier, I've had a lot of firsts during my life and my career. I am first generation law enforcement. I think I surprised everyone when I decided to be a police officer. I think my mom's still trying to figure it out. Nobody saw that one coming. I was the first, first person in my family to receive my bachelor's and master's degree. I was the first female, first sworn female member of the command staff when I was promoted to Lieutenant, the first and only female captain, and now the first female chief. Not to undermine my qualifications because I can assure you, I'm qualified. The female part was just the cherry on the top. Being first is a great accomplishment, but it has very little meaning if I don't lead the way for other women to follow. So tonight swearing in, it's not just about me, it's about Judy, it's about Marie, Abby, Brittany, Sarah, and Phelan, the six other female officers at our Police Department. It's about them and the other women in the Garner community who may be considering a law, a career in law enforcement and see my accomplishment as an inspiration for them to pursue a career in law enforcement. I'm almost done. Retired Sergeant Sophia Sandlin messaged me earlier this week to congratulate me on my promotion and leave with me some sound advice. And for those of you who do not know Sophia, she is the first black female to retire from the Garner Police Department, as she did so earlier this year. She served our community faithfully for 30 years and was a mentor and role model for many, including myself. She reminded me of Proverbs, chapter 3, verses 5 through 6, that says, "Trust in the Lord with all your heart and lean not on your understanding; in all your ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your paths." What a What a great reminder and great advice from a fellow peer. So in closing, I want to say thank you to everyone who has supported me throughout my career and throughout this journey. Thank you to everyone who came out in person tonight to support me and to all my family and friends watching from home. Thank you to town manager Dickerson and to town council for your trust and confidence and support in me to lead the police department. There is no better place to work than my hometown, and I am so proud to be your police chief. Thank you.
Mr. Mercer, do we want to get any other pictures at this time?
A few quick ones here.
Okay. If the audience would just sort of be at ease for a few minutes, we, we're gonna take a few pictures. And what I'd like to do always is to give our council members an opportunity to make a few comments, so you can wait right up there at front if you want to, or there will be fine. You don't have to stand. If you want to sit down, you can. Okay. And I'll begin with Councilmember Singleton for any comments he cares to make.
Congratulations Chief Smith. I think it says a lot of the respect and admiration you have of so many of the men and women of the Garner Police Department are here, both folks who are currently working and also several who have retired are here. I think that says a lot of your friends and your colleagues. I know you do a great job. I know you're a Garner girl, like I am a Garner guy, so that's a little special to some of us who've grown up here and gone to school here, but we know you do a great job in leading our police team in the next years to come. So congratulations to you and your family.
Mr. Behringer?
I moved into Garner, I lived on the outskirts, so I moved into Garner about 28 years ago, and I became involved in community watch the next year or two, and then I met Lori. And so I've had the opportunity to watch her grow, move up in her career and her personal life. I remember when she and Eric got married. I remember when Parker and Paige were born. And I remember those times she and I were in a parking lot at Avery Street Gym and talking, and she stopped in the middle of the conversation and said, "Look at that creep. Look at him. He's trying to make a drug score right here in the middle of the day." And I went, "I didn't see a thing." But it has been my, my joy to watch you move up through the ranks in the police department and, and to come to this day. And I got a lot of subtle and, and a lot of not-so-subtle suggestions over the past few weeks that the community really hoped that we were smart enough to make Lori the new police chief. And so I think we scored when you scored. Thank you and welcome aboard.
Okay, I'll recognize Mr. Vance at this time.
Congratulations to you, Chief, and I have had the opportunity to learn you, learn about you, listening to your bio and your achievements. There's no doubt that you are a trailblazer, and your love for Garner is quite obvious, and your love for the community and your activities, I know that they will continue on, and there's no doubt that the men and women of the force also love you because they're here behind you now. And I wish you the best, and I know that you will continue to blaze that trail.
Thanks, sir. And Mr. Dellinger?
Congratulations. I just want to say that, you know, from the time you stepped in as interim chief, your demeanor elevated, and, and the level of professionalism and integrity and steadiness you had as interim chief and through this process just made you the obvious choice. We wanted the best, and we got the best. And you've got an entire department behind you and an entire community behind you, so good luck.
And Mr. Matthews?
Congratulations, Chief, and I could echo so much what has been said all right for so long, and, but we do go way back, and I remember when your husband taught me to be a first responder back when I was a volunteer fireman, and you two kind of came together, and look where you're at now. And this is, I'm very excited for you, and as mentioned, I think your whole team is behind you 100%. And, and I look forward to seeing all of the new levels and things that you're going to accomplish and lead this department to. I'm sure you already got a list started, and I would expect nothing less, and it's gonna be interesting a few years from now as we grow to where you're at and some of these captains are at and, and all that's going on. So that's like I always tell you and the police department, come in, unlike some towns, this board's got your back, and what do we need to do to make this department even better? You know, we're on board with you. So congratulations to you and your family and all of our policemen with, thank you for what you do.
Okay, thank you, council. And I'm gonna take just a moment, I'll be brief as well, but congratulations. It's a, it's a high honor for our town and for me as mayor to welcome you to the position that you hold now. I found a quote by Rosalynn Carter, who some would consider to be a strong woman, and she said this, and I commend these words to you, Chief Smith. She said, "A leader takes people where they want to go. A great leader takes people where they don't necessarily want to go, but where they ought to be." I think you're inheriting a police department that is in good place, but as you live out your tenure, you may find at, at times that maybe they're not necessarily where they want to, want to be, and so you as a leader will be able to take them there, I'm fully convinced. As Phil and others have said, I think this council certainly stands behind you. As mayor, I will do anything I can to make you successful and the department as well, and so don't hesitate to call on me if you will. Again, congratulations, we're so proud. Let's give her one more round of applause. Okay, and with that, I think she wants to be excused along with the other police folks, and we're gonna get on with our regular business meeting, so we'll give you a moment to exit the council chamber.
No, I wanted to be in the corner, I volunteered.
I didn't know it was quite that literally.
So did I.
Rodney, glad you did.
I'm glad you didn't look at me.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Wouldn't have missed it. He was out there, he's like.
I said, "You better be good, sir, now."
Okay, council, I'm going to call us back to order, and we will proceed with our agenda. The next item of business is to approve the consent agenda. There are four or five items there, no, several. You've had a chance to review those, unless someone wants to pull an item from that, I would ask you to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Okay. All in favor approving the consent agenda, please vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, and there's no opposition. All right, thank you so much. We will now go into public hearings, and we have several of those. So at this time, I'm going to recognize Mr. Reginald Bowie for the first item on our, on our agenda. Mr. Bowie, I'll hear from you at this time. And by the way, I do understand maybe Mr. Trezenberg, the planning director, is, is available on, in a virtual mode, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Mayor, if we, if may, if there is anybody that was in our overflow space that hasn't come down to the, to the chambers now, if they're hearing this, they can do that, and we'll check to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to be in.
Please, yeah, thank you. I forgot to mention that, so let them in, please. Okay, Mr. Bowie?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm gonna give you an overview of CZ 2111 Timber Drive Thompson Props. It is for conditional rezoning. The applicant is Raleigh North Development, properties owned by Thompson Investment Company. It is located on Timber Drive, and the property size is 18.45 acres. This is a tier one request to conditionally rezone two undeveloped lots from single-family residential to multifamily MF1-C-252, conditional district, to allow for townhomes and/or apartments with preferred zoning conditions only. Thompson Investment has owned both properties since 1983, and the lots are vacant, and they do contain special flood hazard areas. As you can see here, there's an aerial photo of the site. Street view of the site location. The adjacent zoning and land use to the north, we have R-12, R-9, and R-20 zoning districts. There's open space for, from Staunton Meadows, some residential and vacant property to the north. To the south is R-12, which is Van Story Hill subdivision. To the east is Community Retail, which is vacant, and to the west you have R-20, R-9, and R-12. R-20 is vacant, R-9 is Malibu Valley subdivision. There's been quite a bit of rezoning in the area. I would not bother to go through each one of these cases, but you can see it's been quite extensive over the years, beginning in 1987 up to 2001. Existing zoning summary, again, the property is owned R-20, which is characterized by single-family lots of at least 20,000 square feet with a maximum density of 2.118 units per acre. Some examples will be single-family dwellings and some special uses such as institutional, public, and other compatible uses. Again, both of these sites are vacant. The applicant has proposed multifamily MF-1-C-252, and you see the following list of permitted uses for this district. One will be townhomes, and this other is multifamily, triplex and higher, including The applicant came up with some voluntary conditions. I won't go through all of these, but there were 13 additional conditions, and most of these are aesthetic, so depending on what is approved, whether it be apartments or townhomes, they will have treatment to make them more appealing. I will read number 14, that there will be a 50-foot buffer with the property's common boundary line, the southern property line with lots in Van Story Hills. This 50-foot buffer should not extend it to the 50-foot conservation buffer area as established by the Town of Garner. The buffer requires retaining all significant vegetation and does not allow for any grading in the buffer. The clearing of existing brush or downed trees shall be permitted in the event that there is construction of a building and/or parking lot in a location that is within 100 feet of the property's common boundary line. The southern property line with lots in Van Story Hills, a large evergreen shrub screened to a height of six feet shall be provided, supplemented in the buffer as needed. The reason for the request is that the applicant wants to market the, the properties for townhomes and apartments. He has not submitted a site plan at this time. Staff did encourage him to do so, but he chose not to. And he has offered voluntary zone conditions which will be applicable. And again, both lots are vacant and have been owned by the, by the applicant since Overall neighborhood character, this site is located near the intersection of Timber Drive, Harth Drive, and Nicholson Road. Timber Drive is classified as a thoroughfare on the Garner Transportation Plan and does handle high-vibrant traffic during the morning and afternoon peak hours. The area around the site consists of single-family residential and retail commercial uses. And again, there are undeveloped lots to the north and west of the site. Neighborhood meeting, staff identified about 83 properties within a notification radius and provided a list to the applicant for first-class notice, mailed notices. Neighborhood meeting was held on November 4th, 2021, at 6:00 PM at Avery Street Recreation Center at 125 Avery Street with six persons representing four properties in attendance. And this is just a map of the, the area of the neighborhood. Staff, our recommendation is that once the council has heard comments from the public, that we send conditional zoning request CZ 2111 to the planning commission for review and recommendation regarding the request consistency. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Bowie, and yes, I will ask council if they have questions for you at this time. I'll start to my left with Mr. Matthews.
At this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
First of all, I have two. One, looking at the map and the site, the line around it, there is a, the homes that are on Harth Drive that back up to it, there's that narrow sliver of land here which are not included in the site. Who owns that land?
The town does.
Community property?
Yes, sir.
From the town, from the, from the.
The area around the site consists of single-family residential and retail commercial uses. And again, there are undeveloped lots to the north and west of the site. Neighborhood meeting, staff identified about 83 properties within a notification radius and provided a list to the applicant for first-class notice, mailed notices. Neighborhood meeting was held on November 4th, 2021 at 6:00 PM at Avery Street Recreation Center at 125 Avery Street with six persons representing four properties in attendance. And this is just a map of the area of the neighborhood. Staff, our recommendation is that once the council has heard comments from the public, that we send conditional zoning request CZ 2111 to the planning commission for review and recommendation regarding the request consistency. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Bowie, and yes, I will ask council if they have questions for you at this time. I'll start to my left with Mr. Matthews.
At this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Singleton.
First, I have two. One, looking at the map and the site, the line around it, there is a, the homes that are on Harth Drive that back up to it, there's that narrow sliver of land here which is not included in the site. Who owns that land?
The town does.
Community property?
Yes, sir.
From the town, when the subdivision was approved and built. Okay. Also, I'm making an assumption here, but I want to ask it. I'm assuming the only access to this from a roadway standpoint is off Timber Drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay, I'll go this way, Ms. Behringer.
Just one question, is, did the applicant give a reason for not presenting a site plan?
No, but he is here to speak on behalf of his application.
So we'll get to that after we finish questioning here, okay. Mr. Dellinger.
My question's sort of a follow-up to Mr. Singleton's question on the site access. It seems like the only, the eastern lot would be really able to be developed on, so you have really tight density. And it said the maximum, well, the density was based five dwelling units per gross acre and that's the total of 18 acres. That's 90 potential units. So my question is, does our UDO require, not require, a second access point for that size of development?
I cannot answer that question at this time. We have, we have not completed a, our final assessment of everything, which that's going to be coming. I think Jeff, Jeff is on the line, he may be able to answer that.
Mr. Treesenberg, if you're available and could weigh in at this time, that would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, if there does get to be a point where they would reach over 75 units, it would require a second point of access. There are also overlay restrictions that will apply to the site as well that would probably help keep heights and things like that from getting, getting excess of 35 feet.
But it kind of begs the question if the, one of the conditions shouldn't max out the number of units so that there isn't a point where there needs to be two different entry points? If, I mean, because there is, I don't see any second entry point options. So I don't know if that's self-limiting or if we want to make sure that they don't buy a lot and try to connect through on that southern street somehow. I don't know. Just thinking about the potential maximization of the property and the implications it would have for connectivity. The other one, the other question I had was on if the three-story height limit is, is that driven by our own UDO? Or is that a self-imposed condition? Because I don't see why you'd want to limit it if you didn't have to. Does anyone, does Jeff know, or?
Jeff, can you respond to that question? About the height, the building height limited to three, three stories?
If, if you can give me just a few minutes, I'll be glad to report back to you.
Okay. I'll, I'll pass on to Mr. Vance.
Okay, sure, yeah. Mr. Vance.
Yes, and this ties in with councilwoman Behringer's question in reference to the site plan not being provided for this review. How often, well, is that common for us to not have a site plan to look at in consideration of rezoning?
There are some requests that can come that do not require a site plan initially, so I think that's probably why he did not. But again, he's here and he can answer that. But with the 160D, things have changed, so now some requests can come before you without a site plan.
Okay, you finished there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I was coming back this way.
I mean, jumped again, sorry about that. The, as I'm looking at the site, that sliver to the left of it there, you said the town owns that?
Yes.
Tell me about that.
I don't really have any details about it other than that the town owns, I don't know when the town purchased it or acquired it or who they acquired it from.
I believe there's a sewer easement on that parcel, but we'll double-check, Mr. Matthews.
Okay. Was anything else here?
No, sir, I was just curious how that came about.
Any follow-up, Mr. Singleton?
No, I'll let the owner talk, make his presentation because I have the same kind of concerns about access to the property as Mr. Dellinger's also mentioned. With the buffers that are currently, with the buffers that surround the stream, I'm trying to figure out again if there's only one entry point, is that the northern, excuse me, the eastern end of the property? It's going to be hard to get two access points that close together.
Okay. Does council have any more questions for Mr. Bowie? If not, we will ask the applicant to come forward at this time. Are you ready?
Treesenberg.
Treesenberg. I think Jeff has.
Okay, excuse me, that's right. Jeff, you were going to get back to us just a moment.
Sure, thank you. I did check on the height limitations. It is an ordinance-imposed 35-foot height limitation. And just to piggyback on Mr. Vance's question, we've always had the ability for folks to submit a conditions-only request. In most cases, we always advise the client to tread kind of carefully with those requests. But if you'll recall, just a few meetings ago, you had a case before you at the intersection of Old Stage and 401 and that also was a request with written conditions only.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bowie, before we?
No.
Okay. If you would come forward, sir, and state your name and address and.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Phil Leighton. I'm with Raleigh North Development located at 5,003 Falls and Neuse Road, Raleigh. We are proposing to rezone this property from R-20 to MF1, a multifamily zoning. And in our rezoning request, we are limiting the density to not more than five units per acre and we are also restricting the uses to townhomes or and apartments. We had a meeting, let me point this out too. Also, our rezoning request is consistent with the Town of Garner's future land use map, which designates this land's use as high-density residential. We held a neighborhood meeting back on November 4th. At that meeting, Brent Purdom with Bowman, Carolina and myself were at the meeting representing Raleigh North Development and we had six attendees at the meeting that either lived nearby or owned properties nearby. And the comments and concerns expressed at that meeting mainly focused on stormwater control and how development might impact wildlife and how development might impact an increase in foot traffic across their backyards to the Timber Crossing Shopping Center, which is located on the corner of Timber Drive and Benson Road. This property is located about 300 yards west of the Timber Crossing Shopping Center. We explained that the stormwater control would be designed to meet the UDO standards of the Town of Garner for quality and control. We explained that development to this site was impacted by natural buffers, wetland buffers, and a conservation buffer that would prevent a large percentage of the property from being developed and which would allow a large proportion of the site to remain in its undeveloped state. At that meeting, we also explained that we were, as one of our conditions, we were offering a 50-foot buffer that could act as a natural barrier between the development site and their lots in Van Story Hills. You know, if you don't mind, go to slide number two. Okay, this is the site, this shows the flood zone and the conservation buffer. As you can tell, the site is very much impacted by the conservation buffer. Development cannot impede into that area. And please go to the next slide. We had solely environmental consultants do a wetland delineation on the property. In addition to the conservation buffer, this site is impacted by stream buffers. And if you go to the next site, we had the stream buffers overlaid on top of the conservation buffers and as you can see, there's a large portion of this site that is, that's really hard, you cannot develop it. It cannot be developed. And those stream buffers from, they are 50-foot from the middle to the outside, so it's 100 feet across those stream buffers. Now, if you go to the next slide, this is how we envisioned the site to be developed. I don't think, you know, at the most, we would probably be able to get 75 units in there if we did an apartment. I don't think we could get any more than 75 units, but we did request for five units just to be on the safe side. Now, you'll notice that the, this is a driveway, a shared driveway that aligns with Nicholson Road. It shows how the site can be developed and it shows it's very limited in how the site can be developed. There's, it also shows the 50-foot buffer and I think that's all I have for now. I'm open for any questions you may have. And also Brent Purdom is here for any technical questions with Bowman, Carolina.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leighton. Yeah, let me see what council may have. I'll, I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
Again, I'll go back to, there's no site plan. You did answer some questions, but I'm just curious as to why you didn't present a site plan with this application?
Well, this is a challenging site. I don't know how familiar you are with this site, but it's been on the market for several years and there's a reason it's been on the market for several years. It's a very challenging site and, and we would like to have those options available as we get into designing it. We don't want to spend a lot of money on the site and then get turned down for a rezoning request. And because the rezoning request is consistent with Garner's future land use map, we felt like it was a reasonable request as long as we could, you know, satisfy some concerns that the neighbors had and we think by offering the 50-foot buffer in addition to all the national, the natural buffers that this property has, that it would be more amicable for the town.
Okay, Mr. Singleton.
First, can you scroll down and go to the previous slide? Is that right there, yes? Mr. Leighton, on the, where the shared driveway is, that's allowed for both those properties. Do you own the property directly to the issue?
No, I, no, I'm in discussion with those folks regarding the shared driveway.
Okay.
And, you know, that's what we want and I think it's in everyone's best interest if this property owner agrees to do a shared driveway. If, if, if for some reason we are unable to reach an agreement, then we would have to move that driveway as, according to NC DOT. They would like for us to move it as far away as possible from the, from the property line. So we'd have to move it in, you know, further west.
That's limited by the flood zone and the buffer, so it's only so far you can go.
That's, that's exactly right. It's, it's a challenging site.
And in regards, you talked about possibility of maxed at 75 units. You had the 50-foot buffer. The stream buffers on the, as you go south of the site, there's no thought of crossing that stream and building anything in there? Or is that?
No, according to our engineers, he said, he says the time you cross over that and then allow for setbacks and stuff, it just wouldn't make any sense.
Okay, I'm just curious. Since it's, since it's there and so visible, that's all for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger.
I don't have any other questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Matthews, anything? Mr. Vance?
Yes, Mr. Bowie, can you go back to that slide, the one that was up before, the one that showed the conservation buffer? And just for clarity on my part, in reference to the area that shows the conservation buffer in that area from the east to the west, all that land will not be developed at all?
Cannot be developed.
Got you.
Even if you wanted to, you couldn't do it.
So that little, that little area that you're showing now is the area where you're focusing?
That's all that can be developed.
Okay.
The light green.
That area, as you mentioned, would be difficult to, to develop a site plan because of the terrain, the, I guess, the type of terrain that's there?
It's a challenging site. We feel like this portion of the site is very developable, but we want to have our options open as we move forward with this. We might determine that a townhome site would be better than an apartment site. We're looking very strongly at the town, at doing a townhome site and that's what we, we plan to do, but we get in there and determine that, let's say, for example, if we have to move that driveway, entrance driveway and DOT imposes certain conditions on us that makes it very hard, say like a right-in and a right-out turn, then that's not going to be very acceptable to a residential homeowner, but it would be more receptive to an apartment dweller than it would be to a residential homeowner, in our opinion. So that's an option we have to keep open.
Okay.
One more question, Mr. Leighton. The property, the property's about 18 and a half acres, but it looks like with the buffers and not going south and crossing the two stream buffers, it looks like you've got, what, about seven acres you can develop? Seven or eight at the most?
We don't have that.
Don't have that much?
No, we don't. We have, we have less than five acres, really. Because you really have to take the portion that's north of the stream buffers. The portion south of the stream buffers is, it's not practical, it's not feasible at this time, we don't think, to develop.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, it obviously, you know, really limits how much you can use this whole plot, for sure.
It, it does.
I admire your efforts to try to, try to work this in there, sure enough. Anybody else? Phil, anything?
No, it's just a very unique situation here and I'm very familiar with this site and I've often, I knew why I wanted to develop because you can see it all wet, all down in there and limited space and I think they've done about as good with it as they can. I understand what he's saying at the same time, so.
Okay, okay. Mr. Dellinger, follow-up?
That is a sort of a UDO question for Jeff, I suppose. Is there any exceptions that could be made onto the height limitation or is that kind of immutable?
Not at this time under the MF2 district. And unfortunately, apartments are only allowed in the MF1 and MF2 districts. Townhomes, on the other hand, are allowed in some of the other commercial office districts which don't have that 35-foot height limitation, which in some respects is a little bit counterintuitive. And so if they decided to go with townhomes and wanted to do a, you know, a three-and-a-half, four-story product with three living levels above a garage or something, one of those other districts could allow that. But otherwise, for MF2, the cap is at, at 35 feet. With the new ordinance, we'll have, we'll have some more leeway with that, but for now, MF2 is capped at 35.
Yeah, I asked that because when you drive through Raleigh, like over New York- Yeah, I asked that because when you drive through Raleigh, like over near Crabtree and along the Belt Line, you see these taller apartments that are four or five stories in wooded areas and allows for more density. So I don't know if they're aware, we have a UDO rewrite coming, but it, you're right, it's a challenging site, and so make sure you give yourself as many options as possible when you go to develop it, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out about the height. It's important.
Anybody else for Mr. Layton? Questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Town Manager?
I was just gonna, there was a question about the strip of land next to it that is Town of Garner property, and it's listed as parkland on the deed, but there's a sewer line that comes in about a third of the way down and then cuts diagonally through it. So it's 1.7 acres.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Okay.
Fully in the conservation buffer?
Yes.
Okay. All right, counsel, let's see, was the other gentleman planning to offer any testimony or no? Okay, okay. Let's say have questions. Counsel, you've, you've heard the presentation, and as you know, we're not taking final action on this tonight by any means, but what's before you is to consider referring this to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation, then it'll come back to us. So are you ready to, to move in that direction?
Yes, sir.
You made the motion, Phil?
I'll make that motion, refer it to Planning Commission for their review and recommendations, let it come back to us and see where it goes from there.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, if you are in favor of the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If you're opposed, no. Okay, so that's the action that will be taken, though we're not sure exactly when that will come back to us. I'm trying to remember if there's a, well, there's not usually a set timeframe, is there? Do you know, Reginald or John?
I don't know the exact date.
Okay.
For that.
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen, for, for coming, and we'll let this progress along and hope things work out.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you much. Okay, we now move to item two, and our town attorney is going to leave us through, through actually this one and the next item, so this has to do with the criminal penalty amendments compliance with SB 300. So Ms. Jones?
Thank you. If you just bear with me, I have a few changes I want to highlight for you from what's in the printed materials. Okay, as I mentioned before, the primary gist of these ordinance amendments are to comply with Senate Bill 300, which was adopted as session law 2021-138, in which the presumption that all violations of municipal ordinances can be punished as a misdemeanor. Now, the presumption is that they cannot be punished as a misdemeanor unless they are specifically stated in the ordinance, and that they be adopted after two readings before the town council. So tonight would be the first reading on these amendments. As you can see in section 1-8, I have added an escalating civil penalty. This is parallel to the one that's existing in the Unified Development Ordinance currently, so that, you know, it would start at $100, and then, I need to correct that. It's, I think it's supposed to start at $50, go to $100, $200, and then $500 if those, if the same violation occurs in a rolling 12-month period. That'll need to get corrected.
You said it would start at, at 50, then go to 100?
Right.
And then it increases by 100?
So it's a little bit different than, I believe, the UDO, but most of current ones are, are 50, have been $50 traditionally. And then I have added in this provision also that civil penalties may be assessed by a citation issued by the town manager or designee and recovered by the town in a civil action in the nature of a debt. That is currently the status of state law. I just wanted to clarify, you know, who had the authority to issue civil penalties as, you know, some departments may not currently be issuing them for certain ordinance violations. The police department did recommend that bird sanctuaries, which I believe is most of the Town of Garner, that that can, that be specifically a misdemeanor, gives them the ability, when they catch people in the act shooting at birds, to, to be able to take action without just writing a civil penalty for, for $50 or as it escalates. So most of these did not have a specific stated violation, but the police department did recommend that these provisions, that there be the option to punish them by a misdemeanor This just shows, there is an old reference to the town and fee, the town fees and charges ordinance. The town has not been using an ordinance like that for quite some time. There's an adopted fee schedule, which is generally adopted each year with the annual budget, can sometimes be amended throughout the year, but just wanted to, to correct that reference and remove the obsolete reference to that old ordinance. So I did talk to Farsh Jones from the Public Works Department, and although the trash and garbage ordinance has had the option of being punished by misdemeanor, he could not recall any misdemeanor charges. The police department could not recall having any calls for service to write a, you know, a criminal charge for this. They have found that civil penalties and the additional fees for certain bulk pickups and have done what was necessary to, to encourage compliance with, with this particular ordinance. So he did recommend that the, the misdemeanor language in that be removed. There's a couple little, you know, also corrective type things where it was referring to a section or article rather than the entire chapter, that chapter six is the nuisance chapter.
This one does start with a fee of $150.
Yes, so, so with that, unless it's specifically stated, we would go back to that, oh, I'm sorry, we will go back to that general escalating type of scheme for issuing those.
If the fees are that low, one sits back and looks at $25 or $50 for the time it's going to take to collect that $50, you're probably in the red already, and there's nothing else, in my opinion, would get anybody's attention. How, how much locked in are these fees, or can they be increased to make it, put more bite into it, I guess?
So certainly, you can amend the civil penalties at any time. If you, if you think that $50 is too low for some of these, we can increase those to 100 or something like that. $50 is the minimum to use the debt set-off program, which means we can file a claim, and then if someone gets a tax return, that can basically be garnished from the state, but it has to be a minimum debt of, of $50 to the town. So obviously, I wouldn't recommend going any lower, but yes, if you think that 50's not enough for a starting point, we can certainly put that in at any time, and that change can be, because this is to civil penalties, that can be changed at any time, so we could do that before it's adopted on the second reading. Then, as you may recall, in the Criminal Justice Reform Act that was just adopted, there was a prohibition against criminal penalties for outdoor advertising. That was specifically meant for billboards. This provision is more for people putting flyers up on, you know, telephone poles, trees, things like that. So I've removed the outdoor advertising so that we don't run afoul of that prohibition, and it's clear that we're not trying to regulate signs or billboards that already receive a permit from the town. And then the public, I'm sorry, the Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources Department Director had, had pointed this out to me, that there is a limitation in this particular provision that's really only for town parks. She wanted to make sure that it would cover recreation, indoor recreation facilities as well, and so my recommendation is that we exempt out short-term rentals of any town property, which would be in accordance with how the town has been operating. But again, to have, if there would be a gathering or some use of, of town property that was not permitted by the town, it would give the police the opportunity to go in there and charge someone criminally and, and have them leave the area at that time. So this would again allow for town contractors to use the property for governmental function or for people to rent any type of town property that's available for rental for public gatherings, meetings, and, you know, other events. And this would also be important with the recent acquisition of the Lyles property and the event center, should the, the town continue to want to use that as an event center, open to rentals by the public. And just want to double check, but I believe that was the last change. So again, you'll see that there are ordinances that have $50. If your direction is that you'd like to start that at 75 or $100, I can go in and make those changes before it comes back to you. Got to stop hitting for the, the second reading of this. So there would have to be another reading presented at another council meeting before you could adopt this ordinance, and right now, unless there are more significant changes you'd like to make, we could do that at the January 3rd meeting.
Okay, and I don't believe there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this matter. So at this point, I believe we receive this as information. Ms. Jones, is that right? And then we'll have it back for the required second reading. You said in January, probably?
Yes, unless there's some consensus of the council that you feel that the $50 fine is too low as a starting point.
Counsel, any feelings on that? Do, do I understand, well, it'd obviously be, I guess, simplest to, to put the amount that we think we're going to stick with, even though if we put in an amount, the council can change it at a later date, is that right?
Yes, you could amend the ordinance at any time.
Yeah, okay.
I have a question. There was a section in there talking about litter of any kind. Has anybody ever really charged and that collected for littering anything? We have so much along Garner Road, I know it's not any more than maybe some other towns have, but I know there are continual, single-packed empty boxes of Newport cigarettes thrown around, thrown out on the sidewalk. Is any, ever really held accountable for that?
Probably not those kinds of articles discarded by a pedestrian or a motorist. I do know in other jurisdictions I've worked with where there's been illegal dumping, where there's, say, bags of trash, government employees have gone through the bags to find bills and things, and, and things with addresses, and have gone after them when they can identify someone connected to that trash. It's often that commercial establishments will do that when their dumpsters are being used improperly at times. So I don't know that it's ever been done here, but it would give the opportunity that if, if a police officer or other town employee caught someone in the act of littering or illegal dumping, that there would be some recourse there.
Any other questions for Ms. Jones?
I don't have any, you know, Mr. Matthews' point about raising the minimum from 50 to 100, I have no problem with doing that.
I don't either.
With me.
I asked you to weigh in, I've heard at least, yeah. Okay. General agreement, I believe, Ms. Jones, to change that to $100?
Do you need to change the subsequent ones to?
Right, so the subsequent ones could be 150, 200, and 500, or it could be 200, 300, and 500.
If you're going to do it, let's do it right the first time. Yeah, let's do it right.
100, 200, 300, 500.
It'll get your attention.
Okay. So you'll make that change, and that'll be presented at the second reading, I believe? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, anything else on this particular one?
I don't believe so. Again, this one, the previous one did not require a public hearing. The minimum housing ordinance does require a public hearing because it is adopted pursuant to 160D. It was adopted pursuant to 160A. So for those, they do require notice and a public hearing, so notice was posted on the town's website on December 10th, at least 10 days prior to this public hearing. Again, we can scroll down. The inspections Department has reviewed these proposed amendments. So there's two purposes for these. One is to update the references to 160D to what the current references are.
Does the mayor need to do official opening of the public hearing for this one?
Again, we were in the, we're still in the public hearings part of the agenda, so.
Yeah, I, I didn't formally gavel it, but in my mind, it was understood that the public hearing was open, yeah.
So you'll see updated references to 160D. Also, we're clarifying that the Board of Adjustment, which is the Town of Garner's Housing Appeals Board, you know, will have all of the powers and duties that are authorized in 160D. That's just a clarification. Dwelling and dwelling unit, as well as sleeping unit, there's an unusual provision in 160D that says you cannot adopt a definition different than that in state law. However, there are no uniform definitions of this in state law, so there's different contexts. So we're just, you know, to comply with 160D, we're saying that we're subject to that. So it, it could be that someone could come in and say, well, dwelling is defined in another state law as this. I'm not sure why this was, you know, a big part of 160D, but it, but it is in there, and I think in looking at short-term rentals and things like this, the legislature did intend to, to define these terms, but they just haven't come out with one uniform definition for, for these terms at this time. So you'll see, again, we've added that, we had a provision in here that said when we use dwelling, dwelling unit, rooming house, rooming unit, that it includes any part thereof, so I've just added to that, and then clarified that the Minimum Housing Appeal Board is the Board of Adjustment for the Town of Garner. And updating references to 160D.
I have a question on the section.
I have a question on Section 721, the alternative remedies. Are those, it's not clear how it's written. Do those alternative remedies have to be existing policies that the town has, or are those things that the board could do under its purview as the board on, you know, at its discretion?
Yes, so I believe that this provision was intended to make sure that the town wasn't constrained. There is, under state law, public nuisances, which have traditionally been used for things like bars, but they were also used for places of prostitution, human trafficking, things like that. So just because it's a dwelling-type unit, wanted to make sure that that authority was still there, and that's more of a criminal process under state law. So I think that's what was intended. Also, to the extent that a dwelling would be an unsafe building due to a fire or some other, you know, tornado, something like that, that we're not constraining to go through the minimum housing process to be able to take action on the property in those emergent-type imminent situations.
I guess that's my question. If you had those emergent situations with, is that sort of a free rein discretion? Or would there have to be a policy enacted or in place to deal with those types of situations?
So generally, under those other state law authorities, you do have to have an ordinance or something. And we do have an unsafe buildings ordinance as part of the nuisance chapter. Again, when you're dealing with the nuisances that are for gambling in bars and houses of prostitution, those things, there is another, under state law, there's a process that you have to go forward with filing a petition for that. So in my opinion, there's nothing additional needed by the town at this time to deal with that, with that type of situation.
Hey, any other questions for Attorney Jones?
And then just, I just wanted to say, the last one is to actually decriminalize this ordinance as required under state law. So under state law, anything adopted under 160D cannot have a criminal penalty, except for those parts of the ordinance which address unsafe buildings. And there are, obviously, in minimum housing enforcement, there may be a range of things, but there are certainly some minimum housing violations that would also constitute an unsafe building. But again, just clarifying that these can be subject to civil penalties like the other ordinances adopted by the town.
Ms. Jones, this is anticipated that on the second reading, the council would at that point in time invoke to approve?
Yes.
Okay. All right, counsel, anything else?
One more question under Section 716 Enforcement Procedure, Section, some Section D, petition to Superior Court by owner. And it lists a 30-day period under which they can appeal to the Superior Court. Is that, is that 30 days set by the state statute, or is that flexible?
It's my understanding it's set by state statute and can't be less than 15 days. But it's customary in zoning and most other parts of 160D-type authority that it's a 30-day appeal period. It's longer than the 10-day nuisance-type appeal period.
You have abandoned properties, and a lot of times there are heir issues where somebody might not be able to get contacted in a short period of time. And 30 days isn't a lot of time for some heirs to be made aware of something and then be able to make an action on it. But we can, I can send you an email, we can discuss, and it'll come back before us. But the short time periods sometimes can be used against folks that aren't even in state, or, you know, and can, I don't.
So this is existing language, and I can see where it's, it could be confusing to someone that we have two different timelines. So we can go with 15 days for both of, you know, I can amend that to, to change it to 15 days for both, or 30 days for both.
Any other?
A quick question, just to clarify. Excuse me, above that on C, the appeals for the chief, excuse me, the orders of the chief code official, inspection department, that has the 10-day. Is, am I reading it correctly? That D is if a decision's been rendered, I'm assuming by the Board of Adjustment. That's when they can take it to Superior Court, which is similar to what they can do now. I think you have to do it within 30 days. Is that not correct?
Right.
If any decision rendered by the Board of Adjustment, and I'm not specifically talking about a, an enforcement issue like I think Mr. Dillinger may be referring to, like a, they built a shed out in a, where it wasn't, you know, too close to property line. Those can be appealed up from the Board of Adjustment to Superior Court within a designated time period, correctly.
Right, so in like a setback violation like that, that would be more a zoning violation. And yes, you would typically have 30 days to appeal your notice of violation to the Board of Adjustment, and then 30 days to petition to court after the Board of Adjustment renders a decision.
But on 716C, if, as Damian was mentioning, that the part's about a property that's overgrown or so forth and so on, that still says here that the appeal has to be done within 10 days of the decision, correct?
That would be an appeal from the inspector or the code official to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
And I think, you know, part of this confusion in here might be that places that have a separate housing appeals board had the shorter 15-day, and people, and jurisdictions that were using their Board of Adjustment generally has this 30-day for variances and other decisions that they make. So I think in, that's where some of the confusion lies. I mean, my recommendation would generally be 30 days, just because it's simpler, and it's easier for the clerk and town staff to determine whether something's been timely filed, or to know when action can be taken. And again, for those particularly egregious situations or dangerous situations, you're more likely to proceed initially under the code official's ability to condemn the building for unsafe conditions, and then to go forward with nuisance, which is a shorter 10-day type appeals period.
Okay.
Under Section C that he was talking about too, when it says the board shall fix a reasonable time for the hearing of all appeals, shall give due notice to all parties, and shall render its decision within a reasonable time. Those reasonable times would be defined by the appeals board at some point as part of a point of policy, or?
Generally, in their, their rules, so, for instance, the Board of Adjustment has a regular meeting schedule. So it would likely be, you know, the next available meeting where staff can put together necessary reports and things like that. And then, you know, render its decision within a reasonable time. Depends on the complexity of the case, but generally, the Board of Adjustment has been getting decisions out, you know, fairly quickly within, you know, the written decision within a week or so, unless they would suddenly have a very large caseload, you know, that might take longer. But yeah, this pretty much tracks the state enabling law. So the state did not say that the board has to decide in a certain amount of days, like certainly is the case with some other areas of state law.
Okay, counsel, are you ready to, I'm going to, I guess, formally close the public hearing, and we'll take this back up on the second reading when we're ready. Correct? Okay, good, okay. Close the public hearing, and no action necessary at this time. We'll bring it back. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is new and old business. There's nothing listed on the agenda for that. Is anybody aware of anything? Okay, none, hearing none. Committee reports at this time. I believe we do have a report from our HR committee. I recognize Mr. Vance at this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have reports. Just want to say that we have two individuals for the Veterans Advisory Committee who have agreed to be a part of that committee. And we have been in discussion, also the Councilman Matthews, to discuss individuals. Those individuals are Mr. Michael Chacey and Mr. John P. Foster, who may, both may be familiar names to you, to you all. I know Mr. Foster, he's been involved on the, on the Board of Adjustments for a number of years, and now is looking to get involved with the Veterans Committee. And Mr. Chase, he's been on for six years. So he's relatively new, but yet still, we believe that he, both will do a great job on the Veterans Committee. I'd like to bring those two for you. And one more is for the Parks and Rec. We have one individual who stepped down from the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee because they were not within the Garner, Garner Municipal, Municipal Area. And the person that has agreed to replace that individual and serve out that term is Mr. J. Dittenhaffer. I may have, please forgive me if I mispronounce his name, but it's J. Dittenhaffer.
You spell that?
Yes, I sure can.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, the Councilman.
Okay, that's, that's fine, yeah.
For the spelling, he's the one to help me out there. But we have those three names I'd like to bring before you for the council consideration and hopefully approval, on the three names said.
And I'll handle that probably in one motion. You're recommending the two for the Veterans Committee and the one gentleman for Parks and Rec. Okay, coming from a committee, I don't know that it needs a second, but I'll see if anybody wants to second the, the motion. Does it, okay. All right, counsel, you've heard the report from HR Committee and the names submitted here. Any questions for the committee on this? Hearing none, if you favor the motion of appointing these three individuals as indicated, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
And if there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Thank you, thank you, committee. It's been a busy, busy year for you, I know, and under adverse circumstances, terms of limits and by the pandemic and so forth. So thank you for your good work. Mr. Manager, I believe I'm ready to hear from you at this point in time. Whatever you have, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, Town Council, you have just one item under your Garner info in your packet. And then we also have, in front of you there, you should, since we're not having a December work session, you should have the pending agenda report that shows some of the items that are anticipated to come up over the next couple of months, or the next months, I should say. And that's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Counsel, any questions, comments for Mr. Dickerson?
I have a question. I reference to the, should it be referenced to this report or can it wait till the council?
I guess it depends on what it is. If you're comfortable waiting, that's fine.
I'm comfortable waiting, I can wait.
Okay, all right. Okay, anybody else's question? Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, Ms. Jones, you have any report at this time?
I just wanted to remind you about the Transparency Act, which goes into effect January 1st. I did, I do thank Councilman Vance for responding. So if you're affiliated with a nonprofit or other type of entity, other community entity, if you could provide that information to me, we'll then use that in the future in the event that there are any appropriations being made to those types of nonprofits, including churches and religious establishments, athletic, veterans-type, any of those types of organizations, if you could let me know. And again, affiliated means not that you're a member, but that you actually serve on the board, you're a director, you have some kind of leadership or management responsibility to that. It's possible that when the budget comes around in June, that certain appropriations might need to be pulled out of the budget and voted on separately so that you can meet your duty to recuse yourself from those particular votes. And again, with the American Rescue Plan, to the extent that you decide to use nonprofit partners as subrecipients, we'll have to do a check on those responsibilities. So at this time, again, if you would just, you know, email those to me, I'll be compiling that information and then working with the Finance Department to make sure that, that you don't run afoul of this new provision in the law.
And again, do I understand, Ms. Jones, this is sort of with the emphasis on, on organizations that the, that the town perhaps provides some monetary allocation to? Is that right? For instance, if a civic club, Rotary Club, the town doesn't provide anything, do we still need to report those things to you? Membership in the?
No, the law would not apply to that, but in order for us to make sure that we don't run afoul of that, you know, I'd rather have a list at this time. If you're not comfortable with that, then we can do it on a case-by-case basis. But it helps us to not, you know, we can create a cross-reference when contracts come before you throughout the year, as well as dealing with the annual budget.
All right. Thank you very much. It was, was that it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, we'll go right to council reports, council comments. Start on my right with Mr. Vance down here.
Yes, first of all, going back to the committed reports, I will say that, let's say, thank you to Councilman Dillinger and to the town staff, to the town clerk, Ms. Stella Gibson, and also to Ms. Ashley Knox for all their hard work. There were a number of applications that came through, and just sorting through and contacting and, and keeping everyone abreast of what's going on. It's greatly appreciated, it really is. Next is that, had a good time at the parade. It was, it was a good time, really did. Had all, you all involved. It was good to see the kids out and have a good time. And I was a kid again for a little while. I wanted a piece of candy, but the mayor only stole, only threw one piece my way and got intercepted before I could get, no, I'm just kidding. And I would just say that that is pretty much just of it. And the question I have for the town manager pertains to the houses that are in front of the G-PAC. Is there any idea as to what is going to be proposed for those homes that were purchased by the town? If so, can you?
Yes, yes, I was just talking to the Public Works Director about those. And we have engaged RFP for those and got a contractor looking at that. And I'm looking at the asbestos abatement. And looks like they should be down by mid-February, I think he's saying, mid to late February, by the time they, they do the investigation on the asbestos, and then abate that, and then demolish them. So by the end of February is the target for all, for all three homes.
Thanks, sir, okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Dillinger?
Just want to, with Mr. Vance mentioning the parade, just want to thank everyone who was involved in making that happen. The committee, kind of co-chair Rachel Tudow, Kim Woodard with Fire and Rescue, and Shannon Mitchell, Joyce Stevens, who's also on the DGA board, Kentrell Perry, Fire Department, Police Department, I'd list individuals, but it would just go on forever that everybody made it safe. I want to thank Public Works as well for their assistance before and after. And the Town Manager's Office for helping with the railroad. And all of our entrants, who came and showed up and dealt with a new logistical situation down there, just thank them for participating, so. So just a lot of thank yous to a lot of people, so, that's all I got.
Well-stated, sir. Well stated, sir, sure enough. Uh, Ms. Behringer?
Yeah, the parade, I, I thought was won over really well and well attended, but I do have one, uh, one complaint. I don't remember the mayor throwing any candy to me, so, uh, he lives here.
Yeah. You're gonna have to wave a little bit better.
Oh, please.
There were so, there were so many people waving at me that I guess I've just missed you, Ms. Behringer.
Soapbox the next time you stand there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I do have a couple of things. One, the, uh, as you exit I-40 onto Jones, the Sausage Road going south, there is an old building there, I think it was a store at one time or something, and it's just piled, the yard is piled high with junk and debris and trash. Can we get that removed? It's been there for years, it's been trashy like that, but it was covered up with brush and leaves and so forth. And now it's, they've cleared all, it appears that some of the overgrowth has been cleared out, and now you can see all the trash out there.
That's the, oh, I guess it was some type of sausage building or something like that? Um, I don't know if that's gonna be removed with the, uh, the ramp improvement or not, but-
Yeah, it may be part of the bridge work. It's outside the city limit, so we might have to work with a partner agency to, to, um, to deal with it if it's not gonna be. But as the manager said, I think that the bridge work will soon, will probably start soon, and that will likely be coming out because of that.
Good. It is a real eyesore coming off of 40, and that is a main entrance into our town, so. Sooner rather than later, I think that would, that would be good. Uh, and my other question is about the, uh, the empty frames for the art- On the one hand, it's wonderful to see the empty frames, 'cause that means the artworks were auctioned off, and that's great. But, uh, after a point, the empty frames start to look like debris left and not taken care of. So how quickly can we get those removed?
Um, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're, Maureen and I've been talking about that, just, yes. Hold on, we wanna know where they're gonna go, so.
And we were talking about, did you have a chance to-
Before the year's out?
Had a chance to talk about any of that yet, but.
I, I think Public Works is trying to work that in to their schedule, because that wasn't on their, they weren't on their radar for, for planning for doing those. So, um, we are trying to figure out a place to store them and, um, and, because we would do, would like to move them one time, so. But we've been working on that throughout the day today.
I just comment, I mean, yeah, I'm hopeful that our artists will be able to, uh, put, get some more artwork out there, working with the DGA and so forth, okay? Very good. Uh, Ms. Fington?
Hello, Mr. Mayor. When the mayor got to me at the Christmas parade, I was down near the fire, fire station. He told me, he said, "I've been out of candy for a while." I can got, walk out in the road, which I shouldn't, well, I didn't get that close to him, but. One time I violated the rules, I said, "Where's the candy for us?" I said, "You got any sandwiches in there?" Said he was out.
More planning on the mayor's part.
Exactly. Anyway, uh, thumbs up, I, I texted Mr. Dillinger after the parade, did a great job. Uh, the, uh, Grinch was a big hit. He came by one time, or a couple of times, police had him in a, in a golf cart, and several kids, I went to see him again, and that's, Chief Smith had to walk by and said, "He's coming, he'll, he'll be riding with Santa Claus." So I told the little, little guy, who was really excited, to see, come, see him come by again. But it was, uh, well done and, and good weather, it was a little cool, and what rain we got, thank goodness held off. I sent a lengthy email to our staff, Rodney, John, uh, Engineering Department, Chief Smith. I had a, a young couple talk to me at length on Sunday about crosswalk issues at Timber Drive and at Heather Springs and Thompson Road, they take their son over to school. Uh, and it's, uh, it's pretty sad when we, when it's to the point, and this is not a town staff issue or town issue, that drivers run lights, and if someone tries to cross a crosswalk, will come into the crosswalk with their car while someone's pushing a stroller and trying to walk a seven-year-old over to school. Anyway, uh, I know Staffman has met with DOT, trying to think of some issues. I, I hear it like y'all do, we, the speed limit was permanently lowered to 35, unless we're gonna set out, the police out there all day long, 24/7, with, with the traffic team and the motorcycles to run people down. People exceed 35, uh, sometime I exceed 35. I have to sometime pay attention, 'cause I'm used to that section not being that. But anyway, they're gonna work on that, though. There was some questions about the, uh, 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 crosswalk signals and how they worked. And it's pretty sad, though, when she said sometime it's so bad she'll walk all the way down to where the new crosswalk is with the greenway and feel safer in the median there crossing than crossing there in the middle because of some idiots who will run a red light or will bump up into the crosswalk while she's crossing it. And I told her, I remember years ago taking my kids there when we had crossing guards, and the lady would be out there with her sign, and people would bump up and get close to the off, to the school crossing guard taking kids across. I remember seeing it with my own eyes. And, uh, not long after that happened, the police were out there several mornings assisting her. Didn't happen then, but it's just a sad situation, that people drive like bats out of you-know-where and can't take the time that, by state law, the crosswalk pedestrians, you're supposed to give to pedestrians. Maybe we need to put a, a overhead sign out there, flashing lights to get people's attention, but anyway. That, it, the speeding issue, they're aware of it, I just tagged it on. But it's, uh, it's just frustrating that, uh, we, we quit having crossing guards when the one got hit, and we all understand why. And so, uh, it's just unfortunate that people have that disregard for persons trying to cross, uh, whether it's at that intersection or someplace else. So, anyway, hope everyone has a good Christmas holiday, and, uh, be nice to have the, uh, work session off, but, and so we got a full agenda scheduled to start the year, so thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, uh, my compliments, I'm echoing on the parade. I thought it was a great parade, and there were kids everywhere, and it's, it really kinda was symbolic, to my opinion, what we're all about. And, uh, uh, it's the best parade we had on Christmas, for Christmas parade. And hopefully, uh, I'm sure there'll be some takeaways, how they're gonna make it even better next year, so we'll see. But that was, it was truly great. Uh, the other item, uh, I was gonna get on committee reports, but, uh, the Veterans Committee as well as the Wall Committee, it's coming in April. We met jointly last Monday down at White Deer Park, and had a, a room full. And this is gonna be one tremendous project, and they're anticipating close to 25,000 people, uh, coming to visit that wall. And, uh, but the teams are really coming together. We've got motorcycle escorts, it's gonna come, parade's gonna come right through town by the schools where the kids can sit. And, uh, and the Vietnam Veterans are gonna get their own little parade that weekend to recognize them. And, uh, so that's gonna be quite an event. So, uh, between the Veterans Committee and the Wall Committee, there's a lot of people coming together to make this thing work. So, uh, that's gonna be a big event in springtime, so, uh. And now we've got the committee on full staff, and I appreciate you guys putting that together. These are good people, and they'll get out there and get the job done for us, so that's all I got, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Um, uh, yeah, on the, uh, on the lighter side, um, I'll refer back to the parade. And, uh, uh, I don't know if Mr. Grinch harangued any of you, but, uh, he was given permission to give the mayor a hard time. And so I know one of the things, uh, I don't think he made, uh, a threat to me, but he, but he wanted to know if the council would consider passing a green hair ordinance to match his on. So I don't think I told him I would bring it to your attention, but I have done that. So if, if he's listening out there, Mr. Grinch, boo on you. And, uh, at any rate, uh, if you wanna appear before us and get a green hair ordinance, we'll hear from him. Okay, and, and again, kudos, uh, Mr. Dillinger and those who assisted you. Um, it, it, uh, heard a lot of good positive comments and, uh, enjoyed, uh, participating in it. And, uh, Mr. Vance over there, uh, I'll try to get a special, uh, uh, segment of candy that I can reach all the way when I throw it your way there, sir, so. Okay, and yeah, Merry Christmas to you all. This is our last formal meeting for the year. Wish you all a happy and a safe, uh, holiday. It's been a good year in many ways, been a challenging year, as you all know. But Christmas time is a good time to stop and reflect, uh, and so we'll have a chance to do that. We'll have our work session, so, uh, be safe wherever you are, and Merry Christmas to you. That's all I have, but we do have a closed session. Um, was there anything before we go into closed session that anybody needs to mention? Okay, if not, then I believe pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A3, uh, recommended that we, uh, go into closed session to consult with our town attorney regarding litigation. I'm not sure the mayor can make that as a motion, but any one of you can.
So moved?
Yeah.
Second?
Okay, so motion made, properly seconded, to go into closed session if the council approves. In favor of that, would you go to aye, please?
Aye.
Okay, and it's unanimous, uh, so I'm going to declare this. But do, does the council desire to take a brief break? Okay, we will declare, declare about a five-to-six-minute recess, and then we will be in closed session. Thank you. Thank you.[17.72][17.82](applause)
Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Yes. Okay, I declare that we're back in open session. The council went into closed session to discuss litigation that our attorney led us through, and at this time, I'm going to ask her, if she will, to summarize the essence of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a potential claim has been asserted against the town. The town did enter into mediation with the claimant, and council has instructed the town attorney and outside counsel to negotiate a settlement agreement. When that is finalized, it will be brought back before the council for an announcement and entry into the open meeting minutes.
Okay. Do we need to take any further vote here now? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate your work. Counsel, that finishes our journey, excuse me, our agenda for tonight. Unless anybody has anything else for the good of the cause, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
The move.
Okay. Move, is your second?
Second.
Okay, properly segmented, thank you. All right, all in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
There is no opposition, so, thank you, counsel, for your good work. I want to wish each of you a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and all those things. And we have a lot of work to do in the coming year, so rest up over Christmas and be prepared to come back in the new year, and we'll get after it, okay? Fair enough. All right, I'm going to declare this meeting adjourned until our next scheduled meeting.
Next year.
That's right.[1771.93]